Did you run it? That's right. Yeah, no, it's the family.
That's how it is.
No, and that's what we need to do.
You told me fifty, I don't know.
Yep. Yeah. Yeah, I think. Once we added the.
Forty-five. So, anything is.
Then it couldn't step out of this.
You're.
We had a study. So, I don't actually need it. But we did it. It should be down. I actually have. Yes. I would have said something, yeah. Yep, yep. Yeah. Oh, yeah. We're April twenty-third. The eight.
They were from, like, really weird.
I wanted to.
Yeah.
Oh, no, we were. What I did.
What's your section of the form?
Well, it's just supposed to be administration. The administrative department's got some information for it.
On the personnel committee cases?
What's that?
We'll move that open forum council has to do with personnel committee. But the agenda item on agenda eight three, so we'll call for open forum.
So, should we just.
Yeah.
What's your topic for the week?
Um, some of the personnel stuff.
Okay.
I'll need your order. So, start with roll call. Joe Menard?
Here. Michelle.
Michelle, sorry, Michelle, bring humans here. Lloyd Johnson? What's good, buddy?
Here.
Please come in. I'd like to read this, excuse me, lady. Of the United States of America. And this is a document which is staying under God, invisible with liberty and justice. Okay, we have had open forum requests, am I correct?
Yeah.
And those all have to do with personnel. We'll bring those, move those forward in the agenda to the personnel committee. And we should put those at after eight B three C, so just before eight four. Okay. Also on your agenda, item eight being number two. Reported findings will be handled in closed session if that may have discussions that need to be handled in closed forum. We'll put an agenda up for a work session to do that with coming up on the evening, because the first, I believe, is. Also, in addition, to add the hiring of the administrative clerk treasurer position to either promote from within or post that position and take applications. That will be a council decision which will replace eight B two. And also to add, this will be eight B six. To recommend that personnel committee be appointed as the bargaining unit for the union contract. Any other issues for the agenda?
Do you want to add the, to set a date for workshop?
Yes. Will that be?
For upcoming meetings?
Yes.
I got a couple of requests to put the agenda.
Okay.
And remove under number eight, section B, one, two, and three, or no, the three with number eight B and C. And also four and five, and under new members there, A and C. And the reason you want those removed, I believe we should have further discussion and get some input from the people we represent.
And then a motion to remove eight A, B, ten A, and V. Is there a second?
I think it was ten A and C.
Ten A and C? Ten A and C, okay. Is there a second?
I just need to understand why we're removing resolution twenty fifteen and then strategic plan.
Twenty fifteen is about appointing a city agent which I don't really feel we really need.
Which is the way to answer.
And, yeah, but it's not mandatory, do we understand? I think that should be a little bit further discussed.
Okay, and then the strategic plan, why is that?
Uh, I had a couple of them. People called me that some of the plan in the plan needs to be changed, so I think we should discuss that at a workshop.
So, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Jill?
No.
Melissa?
No.
Michelle?
A portion of it, yes, but not all of it. So, you're looking to remove eight B, item three, eight B and C?
Yes.
Out to that, but not ten A and C?
And then off the number four and five.
Oh, four and five.
Under this page.
As well as ten A and C?
Right.
Okay, so, is that a no or a yes, Michelle?
Yes.
I vote no. Lloyd?
Yes.
I, Mr. President, motion fails. Three, two.
I'm finally really surprised that it failed because you people want to save taxpayers' money. You talk that way, but you don't act that way.
Motion to approve the agenda has amended.
I make motion to approve the agenda amended. One second.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Lloyd? No. Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Motion carries for one. Okay. Is there any discussion of the consent agenda items?
Yes. Have questions with the unhelpable? I was clarified, um, H ten, Barberswesson Settlement, twenty-four thousand seven forty-nine sixty-five. And then the two pairs, what is that also, portion of the part of our? So, overall estimate of thirty-four thousand nine hundred and two dollars?
Well, part of the four fourteen fifteen payroll, um, part of that pair is also our payroll, the city's payroll, so.
The four fourteen is?
Yeah. So, you're not going to have to chip in for it.
Okay. The Swanson Settlement agreement would have been through April ten? Okay.
So, back pay and the rest, and our pay through April ten.
Okay, and you don't have a rough estimate of that?
That's the twenty-four seven forty-nine, that's the crack for that.
What's, and then the four twenty-seven payroll, that's just city staff and our?
No, that has more than two hundred from, for that next, the next two days.
Okay. And then that will also be state bank Swanson Settlement, HSA four thousand nine hundred and forty-seven seventy?
That is the co-gramma that she paying in for her insurance of that.
The reverse. Okay. And then EPRO Plan for Labor Services of thirty-one hundred dollars? We have, um, I advise? And then, um, right now, you turn up for us, the adper sum of employees at one hundred and twelve seven, one hundred and twelve dollars seventy-five cents. Is that what a monthly cost of like that is for? An employee? How long is that adper for?
I think that's, um.
What should be about three weeks?
Two weeks, three weeks, three.
Two. Usually it's like two days. Okay. And then, um, if it has to kind of add in the city's, you know, to advertise and do that sort of cities.
More of a custom, you can advertise in the city's.
Okay? Other guy?
Okay, that's a satisfying question.
Okay.
And there are, uh, any other discussion on the consent agenda? There are multiple approval of consent agenda.
I make motion to approve the consent agenda. One second.
I vote aye. Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa? Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Motion carries by a vote for the consent agenda. Right hand, Sheriff's Department. Any faculty here with this one? Let's table that up later. Great job, Sheriff. Yes, well, we can come back if we need to. Great comments, Seth, and the ones who agree. Just go ahead and move on. City Council, monthly activity reports? Jill?
Um, so I attended city council meeting last month. Um, there was an audit survey meeting prior to that that was attended. The EDA quarterly meeting that was held, the appeal and equalization meeting, the town hall meeting that followed that. There's a couple personnel meeting meetings, and then the beyond the yellow ribbon five K event. That covers it.
Michelle?
Um, council meetings. Are, I don't know.
Okay.
I got a question with the EDA meetings or something, um, in here. Something about, I didn't know.
Not everything from Jill.
No, Jill, she's out there now.
Anybody on the cabinet? Anybody?
Not that I'm going for the agenda items, because I don't want to mistake something.
A general?
General, um, does it election of officers?
No.
No, that's already been done.
We wanted to over missions, vision, that's those items, but we didn't have enough people. We didn't feel we had enough people because of the way we're absent. We went over our three-year goals briefly, but again, there was some.
I think like, that'd be.
Yeah.
There was no, um, I don't think you acted on anything with the preserve because.
No, there was no action.
There was no action on the preserve.
Correct.
Um, we, well, should say it was no action. We talked about what little action there was, right? Jill was going to look into Gator's sign, uh, for sale, lot sign, basically. We're still on people, let's identify that it was available for this, not as I considered mine, but there was no, she's, she's committed anything.
No, she was also going to talk with the guy that owns Central Cottage and connect him and, uh, that senior.
Senior housing, housing developer, that was some way.
I'm not interested in the property.
Yeah.
Other than that, the one of the acres.
Is there ever any discussion on the Justin Allen business?
Yeah, she did, that was assessed briefly, just that there were a couple of complaints, and she directed her letters and it was followed from there.
I heard anything back on it, I know that there was an email that, you know, passed back and forth as well.
That's the last I heard.
Anybody running my head or? I am not.
I touched base with, um, with them and talked with them on the date that they had the electoral issue, um, just to talk with them and let them know to send a letter back to EDA and request what they could do or note what they could do in order to alleviate the noise concerns. And they would need to request a CUP, so I hope they.
I also had a conversation with him, and essentially the same information is discussed.
Thank you.
Um, okay, I attended the personnel committee meetings, the union initial discussions, the ADW meeting, voice scout meetings with the district, and Eagle Scout project, BSWA a couple of times, so we're firm still. Beyond the Yellow Ribbon event, citywide cleanup day, the audit review, the equalization meeting, town hall meeting, and the last part of the EDA. Melissa?
I went to the city council meetings and also the finance meeting before the last city council meeting. Um, we had a few different meetings for beyond the yellow ribbon, um, there was the five K, um, and then also the five K. The, the EDA meetings, the board of appeals and equalization meeting, the town hall meeting, um, and then I was also there for half of the county as well.
Lloyd?
Nothing special, nothing to say, sir?
How was the turnout at the town hall meeting?
Uh, we had two people at the town hall meeting, so it wasn't a big turnout. There wasn't a lot of interest in the taxation piece of it. Uh, the next town hall meeting will address, uh, parks and recreation, that will be our focus on it. And so, we'd like to see a bigger turnout on that, and we can also discuss the regional park developments as well. Should be a good time for that. Wendy, do you have the date on the next town hall meeting by any chance?
I think it was June twenty-second, because it wasn't with the same night as the, um, and the volunteer meeting. That we had talked about, I'm not sure, it really hasn't been set, I don't believe.
I think.
No, it's been set since then.
No. That was the, the initial discussion was that night, but I think it's been decided.
Okay, moving on to the personnel committee meeting minutes. Any concerns or discussion regarding that? There a motion to approve?
I make motion to approve the personal committee.
Second?
I'll second.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries by a vote. Moving on to, um, a discussion of the administrator clerk treasurer position and whether we should post the position for outside hire or hire from within. I'm going to go through some of that issue. First of all, um, with Anna, Wendy, a new administrator at an entry-level position, which is the old administrative position, would be at seventy-one thousand dollars. If we hired outside, we would have to lay off one person, which would mean we pay unemployment of approximately ten thousand dollars, meaning our total personnel or administration cost would be for the year, one hundred eighty-five thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. If we hired outside, we would have to hire the standard city administrator based on the old job descriptions and would not be able to move to the new job descriptions and the new structure. So, it would prevent us from doing what we voted on last meeting, to move to a different structure, a new structure where we have greater, greater, uh, control and greater, um, so fighting within those departments. So, that prevents us from doing that because we have someone already in the deputy clerk position, which is a union position, and we would be contested if we tried to move that position or change it. So, we're at about a hundred eighty-five, three fifty on that one. If we hired internally, we would have Wendy, Anna, Nicole on administrative staff. Our total spend would be approximately one hundred forty-five thousand four hundred ninety-six dollars annually for administrative, which saves us thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars over hiring outside at the old job descriptions. In addition, it would save us the cost of hiring or headhunting, which was estimated to be anywhere from eight to ten K. So, in the first year, that saves us fifty thousand dollars and allows us to then move to the new structure, the new, um, positions that we've, uh, done in our package tonight, which changes from a city administrator to an administrator slash clerk treasurer, a deputy clerk, and a clerk one slash clerk two. It also allows us then to utilize those savings at thirty-nine K a year to hire a maintenance one or maintenance two, which is drastically needed, and also to appoint an operations lead slash supervisor that would be able to handle the operations piece that needs, that Sean needs desperately so that he can clear up his plate, be able to do the things that we've asked him to do, particularly the CIP and the five-year comprehensive plan. So, that's kind of where we sit with it and what the financial ramifications are. I know there's more discussion that would like to be addressed on that, so let's address the discussion first of all with respect to hiring inside versus posting for outside hire.
Where did we get that eight to ten thousand dollar hire, where's that figure come from?
John, that was from you, right?
That is correct, if we were to employ a firm to help us recruit that position.
Why do we need to hire a firm, do you think?
That's typically in major roles like that, it's typically what cities do, to help us recruit candidates for that position.
And you don't think that posting it, you know, advertising reading in some cities are going to make that?
That would be part of that.
Personal, with that, that court, I think we used, and how, well, I mean.
That would be part of the consulting, that would be their job to do that.
Which we already paid for. Any other discussion?
We talked about that in the personnel committee meeting, so I can avoid all of my concerns.
I would say that that's a conservative estimate from what I've seen other cities pay to recruit administrators, as high as twenty-five K in some instances, or more.
The key piece that I see that prevents us from moving forward to our planned structures, so we restructure, because it would force us to have the old job descriptions and a full city administrator as opposed to moving to a lower-cost administration slash, uh, clerk treasurer. And that, that difference just on the mission pay is submitted. So, it changes significantly what our costs are overall by changing to the new job descriptions and the new structure and allows us then to be able to use those savings where we need to fill a backfill position shortfalls.
Are these no creative positions on a probationary term?
The, which ones?
All of them.
Um, the positions that are under the union, the union contract, I believe, stipulates that the first person, that the first year is probationary, am I correct on that? The first year is probationary under the union contract. If we were to, to hire from within, we would have two union positions, and the other positions would be, uh, non-exempt positions. The clerk two and the clerk one would be a non-exempt position or non-union, and the supervise, the operations lead slash supervisor would also be a, a non-exempt employee or non-union.
And in the personnel policy, I mean, they're actual employees if they're not union.
If they're in, in personnel policy, if they're, if they are, um, non-exempt, they are an actual employee for the, for the one-year probationary period.
The same thing if we hire with them.
If we hire with them, it still falls under the union rules as being a probationary position. If you promote someone to that position, it is a, at, a probationary appointment.
I think before, the discussion that we had at the council, I think is, um, an important discussion that needs to be had, but it also, obviously, we have others that have, that are important, I think it's important that we have their, um.
Suggestions.
Suggest, thank you, there are suggestions as well, because, you know.
I'm open to moving the, uh, the open forum discussions up if you want to have that discussion now in town.
I mean, because it's generally our outlets that are sitting here right now, I think have an input as to, you know, it shouldn't be just up to us by to decide everything that goes on in the city, it's up to the city to do, you know, to move forward.
I'm very commencing to move the open forum up to this point.
I think we did that when we did.
We moved it to, I think we moved it after four.
We did move it after three C.
Yeah, three C, let's, we can move it up. All picking finger that?
Yeah.
Okay, let's call, first of all, I think Sylvia Henry, you were first, as yours in, would you like to come up?
Good morning, good evening, Mayor.
I think when we're looking at hiring somebody for immense clerk treasurer, we should have a people person that gets along with people, that, um, a lot of people do not care for Wendy, I'll tell you that, she lies to people, including me, she did.
I can't have unsubstantiated things being said, okay? Uh, if there's substantiated, I'm gonna deal with that, but I can't deal with unsubstantiated things.
Me too. And what do you mean by that?
Allegations of lying without support is an unsubstantiated allegation. I can't have that in open forum, okay? If, if you feel that she has been untruthful, that's fine, but saying that, to you, but saying that she lies to others is not something that can be substantiated, at least not right now.
Okay, she has to me. And I know this because about a year ago, um, when the senior citizens were in here, okay? She called me and said, "We couldn't have senior citizens due to a state health issue." Well, it all ended up being, we weren't doing anything illegal. We lost the whole senior citizen bunch, moved to Delmo, okay? Um, I don't feel she's qualified for the position. Uh, she tends to, um, have foul mouth in the public, and this has come from a lot of people. Why an administrator when we only need a deputy clerk?
The issue is that we do need to have an administrator slash clerk treasurer. We have to have that position.
I just feel there's...
Hold me, explain that note, Greg. And maybe I'll confer over here. Andy, do you wanna field that?
Yeah, um, uh, Mayor, how so, there's, uh, my throws of the statutes of the city, or chapter four twelve of the statutes, so you can sort of call it, I've seen different cities call it different things, whether it's administrator, whether it's just, just administrative, whether it's, uh, city clerk treasurer, or whether it's city administrator clerk treasurer. I know cities around here, uh, used to work with the, um, the guy in Hanover. He was city administrator clerk treasurer, and he had his official, uh, listing. So, uh, no matter how you call it, that's the, sort of the CEO of the city under the statutes. And so you're choosing to call it city administrator clerk treasurer, which is certainly used by cities around here. You could change the name from that, but the duties are similar, no matter what you call it. And as far as the, as far as the deputy, just before I forget this one, the, and I think your discussion in the personnel committee meeting today, the deputy clerk position, there's a standard to move away from any supervisor functions from that position.
Right.
And that's common too, deputy clerk doesn't have any sort of supervisor roles.
The other, the other requirement is to have a separation for financial oversight.
And that might be something that your auditor has stated as well, so.
Evan's been running me on it so far. Yeah, taking care of most of it.
Well, in my job description as deputy clerk, I was taking care of the financial, but it was still overseen by the odd, by the administrator clerk treasurer. It was, she had the final say on it. I think by statute, that would work out.
That's right. Yeah, clerk treasurer, I'll go along with that, but I don't think we need to. Andy, further, Sylvia?
No, I don't think so.
Nice time. Evan, Sylvia?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Greg, you touched on a few things here about, uh, some of our financial focus and touching on having greater control and the, uh, different staff structure, also with regards to the union. These are all things that seem to have that come up kind of, you know, maybe more last minute here, so I don't know how it's easy to have a good discussion without having the, the council packet. Also, you know, I can't quite follow the dollars, Adrian, and that's, you know, that's only part of it. The city administrator in the city of Winston is leaving his position there. He's working in, I guess he has more family there. And, uh, he spoke with the council and he asked if they should look for him. He told them they should look for somebody that has charisma, personality, someone that can network, you know, get along with people. And I think that's, you know, something we need to look at here seriously, instead of just grabbing, you know, the first person that's there that even thinks knows the city, you know, the city, all the city operates. I mean, we are, we are a small city. You know, part of that is, you know, I would think it'd make it easier for somebody else new coming in that would be able to learn the role. And as far as, uh, doing a search for an employee, I feel there's, there's been time for that, and I still feel there should be time for that. And if neither of you could appoint me to air a city administrator, if that role needs to be filled by statute per se. And I mean, one, you know, my, one of my last recent interactions with Wendy was, it was just a quick answer, and I was asking about some data, you know, about being available that I was interested in, and the straight answer right then when I asked about was, "That's not public." Instead of saying, "Well, look into it and get back to you," and, you know, I wouldn't say that as being charisma there. So I think it'd be short sighted, uh, fielding this role today, I think. We have, all going, Winston City Administrator did say find somebody with charisma, so that's what I think. Thank you.
Thank you, Evan. And, Rue, please.
Evan. Good evening. Um, I'm not gonna speak to Wendy because I don't know if you do a good job or a bad job, so there's nothing to do with, with her. I am concerned that it's, this has come really fast and that there should be more time taken. This is an extremely important position to be filled, and it needs to be done by somebody who has got a great deal of experience, somebody who's got some type of business degree, someone who's got formal training, it's not just, it's like, hey, you know what, I like your cousin, let's hire, you know? It needs to be a thoughtful process behind it. As far as cost savings, nobody gets cheaper than me, I'm as conservative as they go. But when it comes to something like this, and I'll tell you, I unfortunately missed the tax meeting because I did wanna, I was a daylight to the dollar short there. Um, if I can reduce my taxes, I'm gonna find a way to do it. But in this case, I would be happy to spend an extra twenty-five, fifty dollars a year on my taxes to get the right person for the job. And maybe that is Wendy, maybe it's not. But I just think you need to take more time with this and do a good thorough search. Look for people that are, that have that experience. That's my two cents, sir.
Thanks, Rue. Any other discussion as far as posting the position or hiring from within?
Um, I'm gonna have to go on about what was just said here. It is, it is our responsibility, I mean, I know it's an easier position, and it could be that it is Wendy that fills that position, you know, we don't know, but until we actually look and make sure that we find a qualified person for the city and to move the city forward, I think what we should be posting is the obligation that we have to give to, to, to the taxpayers. You know, I mean, I, I'm totally for hiring Wendy, you know, the qualifications are there, or, you know, whatever it may be, but, um, this is a very important position that needs to be filled. So, with that, I, I say that we should post it.
Okay, the other distinction that we have to make as well is that if we post, we have to post under the old job descriptions, and it prevents us from moving forward with what we discussed and what we approved at our last council meeting, which means that we hire a city administrator at a much higher rate and a much higher top end. So the start is much higher and the end is much higher than we would be if we hired from within.
Well, is there...
Can you speak to that a little more? Can you explain that a little more? We have a position currently in the deputy clerk's position, and we will face opposition from union trying to change that position. And the requirement for restructuring requires that deputy clerk's position to be restructured, and that would be at a lower rate. And we cannot do that to move to new job descriptions if we do not hire or structure from within. If we hire outside, we have to face a union grievance for change of that position, and that would mean that we'd probably put this off at least a year, I would imagine would be where we're at. You know, six months to a year to deal with the union grievance for trying to change that position. That would be significantly costly to us.
So the union is holding a gun to the city's head?
Pardon?
The union is holding a gun to the city's head?
Yep.
They're not, they're not willing to work with the city?
They are, they are if we are, you know, willing to work from hiring from within as opposed to an exterior hire. But if they would oppose changing that position to mean a reduction in, in that position and a reduction in pay and a reduction in that, that overall salary spread.
So who runs the city? We do or the union?
Well, you have a contract with the union, boy, that's the problem.
Yeah, but that's gonna be up in a few months.
And unfortunately, you can't do foolish things, you're bad, and you don't mean...
No, but in the new contract, we can change that, and in the meantime, we can be looking for it, so.
Greg, I'm looking at your new resignation mission statement.
Mm-hmm.
Your, I mean, the old one says that we're committed to creating a peacefully responsible, welcoming community guided by ethical role innovation. But I, I see nothing wrong with that, that's what we should be following by. But then your new one, it states that we're putting the citizens first and foremost in the residence, and that we're not doing that. Um, and also it's in here, community and business relationships. I don't, I don't really think that this is fair to Wendy to be putting her on the spot like this, but it is a discussion that needs to be had. It's my understanding, and the reason I ask about the Justin everything is my understanding that Justin is having some complications when he is called up to the city. You know, it's, it's not very, I'm trying to put this best I can. It's, it's not a welcoming environment, so, you know, if we're gonna go by your resignation mission statements, we have to put the citizens first. And what that means is we have to open it up and make sure that we have the best qualified personnel there. And right now, I mean, it, it could be Wendy, I don't know. And I, I really don't think that this was fair, that you put this on this agenda for the whole world to see where people can sit and put Wendy on the spotlight, and I don't think that that was fair for you to do that. But it's done, so it's, you know, it's a discussion that has to be. It should've been a discussion somewhere else, really.
Should be at a workshop.
The, the key, the key pieces here are that with the structure we looked at moving to, and with the structure we discussed in the workshop, and moving to a new structure, which was approved and was talked about in the workshop, that meant that we would be able to provide better service to the, to the community overall, which does serve the citizens.
But providing better services is, um, I just handed you all a paper that I received last week. And I'm not gonna get into the discussion of this, which will have to come to you, but that, that speaks that we have to put it out there because at this time, unfortunately, the best interest of the city is not promoting Wendy. I think we have to do our...
That's not what we're discussing right now, we're discussing whether to hire from within.
Right, but then you, because the discussion is promoting Wendy and hiring with them, so let's just get to the point, say, what it is, you know, that, that's the, the bottom line. Are we gonna hire with and or not? And if we hire with and, then your next step is promoting Wendy to city administrator. So just to the bottom line, is that what we're gonna do? Correct?
That would be the, the logical step.
And your opinion?
If we hire from within, yes, that would be the logical step. Give your opinion. Yes.
Not, not necessarily just for the citizens or the taxpayers.
Is there a way, is there a way we could table this, do a little more research, figure out if the union would be willing to work with us on adjusting the salary requirements for the new city administrator position if we were to post it?
We can certainly address that.
If, if we...
Jill, you know, raised us to have that removed from the agenda.
And based on...
But you voted to have it on the agenda.
I voted, I voted no to all of the parts that you chose to remove.
But you should've just weighed out which ones you visited.
Correct. So if we, what the understanding that I have is if we post with and, then we move to this new structure. But if we post outside, we can stay with the same one, structure we have, correct?
We would be forced to stay with the same structure.
Is there a problem that we stay with that structure?
Yes, it does not allow us to hire in the maintenance, two maintenance, one that we need for public works. It also does not allow us then to promote the operations lead and the operational supervisor because the savings we gain from going to the new structure allows us to do that. So it, it forces us to remain with the same structure, which puts Sean at an overworked position. Without some...
That brings up another question, and I think we should also, uh, check on other cities, how many city employees they got versus the amount of, uh, population. Because I've done some checking a few years back, and Montrose is a little bit heavy.
This is a printout that has all the other cities.
I don't think it has the...
Well, it has Maple Lake, Annandale, Clearwater, Cokato, Dassel, Howard Lake, Timble, Montrose, Rockford, Waverly, and Winston, Winston, and all the employees in those cities.
Is it all of the employees though?
It shows all the employees. Am I correct on that? Uh, Wendy, is it all employees in those cities?
So it's, so I'm just gonna take one use of my set. Does it show that there's ten city employees in Winston? Or, I mean, I don't know.
I have eight on the roster.
And what, okay, and what's population?
Population is twenty-three thirty.
What's the closest population on that two model?
The closest population would be Annandale at thirty-three oh three.
And how many employees?
Annandale has their own police force.
Yep, I have eight.
So I might recruit a police force.
Yeah, they don't have, they don't have a police department.
Okay, that's fine. Or you're saying the Jaffa?
That's right, so we're right there, proving that we're going the wrong way.
So Annandale...
We have seven listed on our, on our roster.
Right, and so...
So that employee, you put it all here.
Annandale also does not have their own police department, right?
Yep.
Right.
They have, they are with Michael Lake, so I don't know if they have an operator.
Their utilities commission has several employees.
That's above and beyond their employees.
And what's the last one?
Uh, Maple Lake, let's look at in their administrative section. In their administrative section, Maple Lake, which has twenty-one oh nine, has four people. A city clerk treasurer, deputy clerk, county financial, and a utility building. Annandale has four people in their administrative, they have thirty-three oh three. They have city administrator, deputy clerk, treasurer, and a part, uh, part of deputy clerk. In Clearwater, they have a deputy clerk, they're seventeen sixty-seven, a finance director, and an administrative assistant, so they have three, at half our size.
So...
In Cokato, they have twenty-seven thirty-three, they have three. City administrator, city clerk treasurer, and a deputy clerk.
And I want to make my comment first, I don't have a problem.
I, I just was addressing the administrative piece of it. I just was addressing the administrative piece of it, which is what we're talking about.
Right.
We're talking about the whole city.
In those cities, you don't have the type of public works that we have.
Which one?
The key piece was the administrative piece of it. And if you look at the-
Because you're talking about structure right now.
Somebody had a question out here on the floor.
No, he was just saying the other ones didn't have like wastewater treatment plants and stuff and I said Coqueta does.
And so, but my question is, we're talking about moving forward with the new structure, we wouldn't be able to hire the different positions?
Not unless you increase the cost of wages significantly.
Okay. But my question is, why do we need to hire all the positions? I mean, I'm just not saying that we don't or shouldn't or whatever, I'm just getting the questions out there. Why do we need to hire all these different positions when we're in a city of 3,000 with an average of seven to nine employees already with a population of 3,500? But that's in place.
Sean, you want to address why you need a maintenance one, two, and a operations lead?
Certainly, Mr. Rare. We are in the middle of phase one of the regional park, which is going to be, that's one of the reasons why we're going to need additional help. That's going to be a 20-plus acre complex that is going to require massive maintenance requirements in the next 10 years. We have a number of different items along Highway 12 that have been added in the last several years that are anywhere from $1,000 a month to maintain, not including wages. We have employees currently that are, we don't have the flexibility for them to take vacations. They're going to the end of their anniversary dates and are forced to take vacations or they lose them just to the fact that we're, we don't have time for the employees to, we've got so much to do that they're obligated to stay, or they feel that they're obligated to stay and work. And you can look at my time sheets for the last three years, there isn't a 40-hour weekend and they're always hired. And when I do take a vacation, there is no supervisory control for questions to be answered or directions to be given to my employees if needed when I've got them. This frees up, gives the ability for somebody else to delegate that to. That was part of the reorganization plan that was approved last month. And this has kind of been the theory that we've been looking at for the last six months and now we're seeing some opposition. So that's kind of the justification why I need additional employees.
We have the problem today because we hurried that last month. We probably shouldn't have hired that fourth person to start.
Well, that was-
Another thing, as far as the park goes, shouldn't that be coming out of the park wreck? Part of the block?
It does, that's all part of this.
Yeah, I'm okay with these guys, but they're only in there when they're available.
But their wages come out of the park wreck also. I mean, their wages come out of streets, park wreck, plant, water, so their wages are split amongst all of it, so it's, I mean, it's not a problem.
When we go back to the original plan, the park was to do that as we had money to build it. And we have started, then it hasn't done. But now, we seem like we're doing it, but now we need to hire more people, that's not quite what I figured it at. If we got a lot of work to do, then we dropped the park, we should do that, or the workers do that instead.
That's certainly an option the council can pursue.
Look, I mean, see, this is the trouble when we do things without really cashing it out. And then really hiring the fourth person. If we don't do it this way now, well, we're going to have to lay somebody off. Well, if we'd have thought about it before, or had a decent workshop on this matter, we wouldn't be in this mess. And I agree with the people out here that we should post, get a real qualified person that knows how to run a city. And it would probably save Wendy a lot of trouble.
I'd like to say something, not defending Sean, not defending council. I've worked hand in hand with public works for two years now, going on two years. It is a department that is short. I am surprised by the morale in that department with, as Don Sean states, the time that these guys are technically allowed off, but they can't get it off because of other things going on. Public Works is a four-season business. There's certain things that you can do during certain seasons. Jason, Dan Menzel, Sean, all often, middle of the winter, cutting trees that we needed out of the parks that were dying off, that were becoming widow makers, freezing their lugs off, granted, this is a job that they hired onto. But as I said before, Sean is a working supervisor in more respects than a lot of people on this council or in this community realize. We are benefiting by having this man work for our city and the poor full-time employees that he has in public works and his water and sewer. His department is short.
I agree.
Extremely short.
We're not discussing this as per-
However, I really-
It's really-
Public Works took on the task to open up phase one up here because it needed to be done. It was pushed through. Public was promised, okay, we're going to have stages, okay? The money's invested in equipment. We tried working evenings until we had people coming out and saying, how are you going to work out here? We're trying to haul in dry weather so that we don't have a bus from one end of town to the other. This gentleman took the abuse from two residents one evening, said shut it down, we're done. Now our equipment is sitting up here that we're paying for because we've got a guy that wants to serve the residents, doesn't want upheaval in the community, and the same thing goes with the rest of the gentlemen that work with him. They're the best crew that I've ever seen. And I've told this council before, as a prior resident in Coqueta, they had a gentleman over there that was in charge of their public works. Just about everything in that town got contracted out. This gentleman and his crew will go and get the tools needed if we don't have them and get the job done, nine times out of 10.
I agree. Chris?
I would just ask with listening though, what I'm hearing tonight, if the council steps back, I don't see the harm of tabling it until your next meeting. Get organized as a council, make the right decisions with the tax payers instead of a emotional decision tonight. You can always hire later, it's pretty tough to get rid of somebody once you've hired them. You know, if the most qualified candidate is the most qualified candidate, where they come from really is not an issue. And adding staff is a long-term commitment. I would just ask the council, I think someone mentioned the table, just to table it for this forum, get on the same page, make a decision that everybody can defend and that there's not the arguing amongst members, that you can all support the decision you made.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Is there a motion? Jill, are you going to make a motion to table it?
I'll make a motion to table it.
I'll say.
Can you be clear on the ramifications of that because that's going to affect later agenda items?
If it's tabled, then what? We would need to table that to the next workshop, which will be the 18th for the first. And in the interim, we would need to contact the union and determine if the union is willing to adjust so that we can adjust the description of the, and the page structure for the deputy clerk.
And I don't think we need to do that because we've got the contract coming up. It can be negotiated if a new contract-
We're still in a contract.
Yeah, we're under contract, that's right. Everything stays the way it is. Nothing has to change until the contract ends.
But why don't, I don't want to post the city administrator position if that's the route we choose to take at the current work earnings.
Well, I agree with you there. We don't need a city administrator, we've been going along here that way. But the new flag, the only thing is, maybe what we need to do is hire another part-time person for Sean. Every time you hire full-time, you get into a lot of expenses. You can have four or five part-time people and go past much as one full-time person.
Yeah, I suppose it counts for that.
But it counts everything.
But moving on, the motion was to table that until the next workshop and have personnel committee follow-up with the union rep. Is that correct?
Let's make it the whole council instead of just the personnel.
It's been my experience and the advice of council states that that's probably not the best position to bargain with the union if they have the whole council to intervene with.
Well, that, that's the new number six maybe. I'm going to chat it here if you step on it. I'm assuming that if this vote is approved, then you would table everything up until the new part be sent.
Correct. That would be thing number two through five until the next workshop that we slightly need to do. Jill?
Aye.
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye.
Aye.
Most carries table for till the next workshop, five oh. Next issue on the agenda is the added agenda. Recommend you that the personnel committee be appointed as the bargaining unit for the union contract. Our council is to have the final approval for any contract.
Which one are you on?
That's the one that was added.
I'm okay with that, with personnel committee going ahead and doing that as long as they keep full counsel informed as the process is going on.
The information on that has to be closed, but it cannot be in open meeting.
Right.
Well, we can have closed, we can have special.
Okay, is there a motion for that one?
I'm ready to move to let the personnel committee be the bargaining unit for the union once negotiations start as long as they keep full counsel informed as the process is going on.
Any second?
One second, that.
Aye.
Lloyd?
No.
I vote aye. Michelle?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Motion carries four aye.
Four aye.
Excuse me, four aye, sorry. Four aye. Okay. Engineer?
I'm a crosswalk. New mayor, council, last meeting, you had asked me to check into the possibility of putting or using a portable stop sign out in the middle of County Road 12 with the crosswalk at school. And I contacted the county and the response is, I was, was what I was predicting, but they did not, will not allow the use of portable stop sign. Actually, that's, that's actually not a fully legal or nor enforceable travel device. So they, they were, they're not going to allow that in the County Road. I guess if the council wanted to pursue it further and further, try and find something there to make improvements, you're probably looking at something with a little bit of cost to it. One thing that I have in mind is possibly looking at flashing yellow light, this being the midfield would be one thing that, and I don't know all these, I don't, you know, I've heard a lot of, I've talked to civil disc every ten, ten months and I've heard a lot of people talk about things, about some of the problems that are there. I'm not sure that I have a, a super good handle of what all the exact problems are there, but, you know, the county mentioned enforcement too. So I guess if it's something you're interested in, pursuing further, that's probably the problem I think is. We even school and county together and looking at something that's going to have a little possibility of, it would be a flashing yellow light or something.
Question?
How about school controls? A lot of your cities have school controls because there are adults at the corner's street.
There is, there is. Also, I received an email from Deputy Finley and he was able to speak with the crossing guards and the principal who advised they were not having any problems with crossing or violations. The resource officer in the Derek program periodic, he wanted a crosswalk and he also has not received any complaints in reference to that. So the other issue is that anyone who does observe that should go ahead and report them and they need to just get a license plate and then they will issue a citation based on having that license plate, so. And if you would keep track with the city and the school crossing guards as well and ensure if there are any other issues that we address them.
You know, just making sure that the cross, I don't know, I'm guessing the crosswalk guards are all trained and with proper, you know, visibility, you know, apparel and things of that nature, making sure that's all we know.
City attorney?
For me, I swear.
Public Works Street Seal Coating.
Hold on a minute. Assistant attorney. Sent out an email today. Just a gist of it is, a couple weeks ago, you had sent out an email, maybe a month ago, you're going to keep us updated on a weekly basis, correct? And it's not happening.
That's correct.
Correct. I emailed and talked to you and Attorney Mike McCain regarding some issues. I was also told that I would have an email sent out to full council that was a week ago and a half ago, correct?
It might not be in similar respects.
Did I talk to you and Mike McCain on the phone, in a, not on the phone?
Yes.
Okay. And when we had that discussion, I won't bring into the facts of the discussion, but were you guys not going to send out an email to the full council regarding the issues that we talked about?
Under the email that I sent out to council today, that was going from Mike McCain. So if we didn't do that, I'll follow up with it.
I sent an email again last week, a little over a week ago with Mike McCain asking again to send out that email to full council in regards to what I discussed with you guys. That did not happen. We have city officer, office hours, correct?
That's right.
Have we missed out on a few of them, office hours?
Missed out today because I had a family illness issue to deal with.
This is not the first one, correct?
But that's been missed?
Right. I like what you're also-
I did for a second.
No, it does not. But just putting out-
You can add anything if you want, whatever you'd like to, possible.
Right. At a cost, correct? Because if I call you-
Well, everything that you have talked about, no bills as well, that's billable hours.
Exactly.
Well, if it leads, I mean, calls are typically no charge because we want to encourage someone to have a question to ask a question. Sometimes that relates to research or a project or something that's done on behalf of that and those are part of the billable hours.
So I have your statement right, one of your current things right here. Review stuff from council member Otto, $75. Review stuff from council member Otto, seventy-five dollars. Um, discuss personal issues brought forth by council member Otto, sixty dollars. Um, so, when you're not here for the office hours that is in your contract and I have to call you, the office hours are free of charge, correct? But then when I in return have to call you, then I'm charged for these, the city is charged, the taxpayers are charged for these, correct?
The telephone calls, if you call us, and I have to discuss that with Mr. McCain or vice versa, if you call Mike perhaps. A lot of times that sets up the discussion in our office about, um, what sorts of things we need to keep track of in the union negotiation process and the personnel policies. And they usually result in quite a bit of discussion and work that comes out of that. Because we want to be sure that we're not missing something, there needs to be a loop that needs to be closed or something like that.
Right. So, my concern here is, is when we miss one of those office hours, which is in the contract and we have to call you and get charged for things and I still don't have a response, speaks later, but your bill currently is thirty-one hundred dollars. You didn't have a problem charging the city for talking to me on the phone, but then you don't follow up. I don't agree with you. Haven't. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do understand.
I don't want to jump the spot, Andy.
That's okay.
But.
I do understand what you're saying. Uh, I need to follow up with Mike McCain on the, because I'm trying to have a clear demarcation between labor employment matters, which is, he's more qualified talking than I am and then the other matters. And so, I think a lot of the things that we can talk about are labor employment matters. I know that, that Mr. McCain speaks to you sometimes without me even knowing him, that's fine because it's, he can love it. So, if he needs to follow up on that, I'll make sure he does. And, you know, he's sort of under my supervision on that part of it.
And I would say that I saw some issues that came across as well and in my discussions with, uh, Mike McCain, there were issues that were brought to them that should have been addressed to the personnel committee and had not been. And that's per what we approved the last meeting.
Correct. That's one of the conversations, correct? Is that what you're talking about?
Yep.
Are you talking about that company, Kansas City Cities?
Yep.
Yeah. That's because as you clearly see that I'm not getting a response from our city attorneys. We paid thirty-one hundred dollars this month for city attorney fees and I'm not getting responses from them. So therefore I look for somebody else and I hold out that on the phone. Uh, Mr. McCain and Andy asked, why did you call the Kansas City Cities? I said honestly, because what happened, the answer to me that we I followed him down. Um, and it is in here that says that you had these telephone conversations that you would follow up and take care of, you know, the, the emails and stuff. You yourself put an email out that said we will have Friday correspondences. We haven't seen the emails since, except for today.
I, I, and with permission of the mayor and council, I'm sort of, uh, taking that to revamp that a little bit because I found that, um, the start of the week, uh, updating what's going on is a little better than Friday afternoon update, if you know what I mean. And then with the, on a meeting week, they have to be tomorrow because of things that might come up tonight.
And then I sent out an email again a week or so ago to Mike McCain, asking for the follow-up on the email. He said that he was busy on the Friday, he'd follow up with me on Monday, which I think was last, not, this, not today, but last Monday, whatever that date was. Didn't get an email, but he was here for a personnel committee with Jill and Greg, so we found time for that. But not to respond to an email.
That wasn't a personnel committee meeting.
The union.
That was a union meeting.
Right, which is fine. I mean, he was out here for that, so it just takes two seconds to respond to an email. We're paying you thirty-one hundred dollars for stuff that's in your contract that's not being followed through.
I would absolutely follow up with him on that.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
So, all right. Greg, can you take one minute while I change?
Yes.
Okay, the other thing that I would state is that we need to follow the new policy and make those issues that are brought up to the personnel committee. Uh, some of the issues that I saw that were brought up in the discussions I had with Mike McCain were issues that were already in process uh, and being addressed by the personnel committee. So, if those become the personnel committee, it would probably save quite a few building hours on our legal bills.
The email that I sent to, in discussions with Mike McCain, were you not forwarded out to them emails?
I was forwarded out to one of those emails.
Right. But it was a whole series of emails.
That was the one with the leading in Kansas City in it.
Mm-hmm. Um.
And then the other one that I received was in reference to the union issues.
Okay. My, my point here is we as a council need to have even better communication with all of us. I know when I was on the personnel committee along with Mark Croft or who's sitting in the stands right now, we didn't do anything. Mark actually made a point to not do anything unless we inform council what was going on. That is our main thing and a lot of things that are going on right now with discussions between personnel committees, city attorneys or whatever, we're not hearing it till now. And it's put on an agenda that we get on Friday, three days prior, because that doesn't give us enough time to look at stuff. So, if we were informed in a, as a timely manner, as you say, um, we would not be still sitting here at, I can't see the clock from here, but eight fifteen. We would have discussed all of this, if, if there was better communication.
And I would suggest that probably starts at home as well, Michelle.
Absolutely.
Good.
Yeah. I still live in the parking lot and discuss everything I had to do with you and all these issues that are coming up, but then, you know, I'm just saying.
To your complaint.
Yeah.
And that was a personnel committee action in response to your complaint.
I was saying.
And that's the reason I talked with you in, in the parking lot and to get to the bottom of that.
So, maybe I'm ignorant in, in how exactly we can come up to business, but I guess when I knew the city council, it was my understanding that essentially business had to be discussed at the city council meetings when forums were present so that the public could attend, making communication difficult amongst all of us. Essentially, one time alone, but also planned a special meeting.
Right.
So, while I think the re-communication should increase, what's the right answer for that? What do they mean?
We had two meetings a month, personnel committees, and really do, you guys turned down to one meeting a month.
Yes.
And anything that we discussed, we made a complaint, unfortunately, it was Barb that did it, but, um, she would send out the email, you know? And so, whether, whenever minutes or whatever, any minutes that came up from your meetings or none, they came up. So, like, we would know that you met with the union, you were getting the council here, I don't know, Melissa, did you know that they're meeting with the union again today? How did you find that out? Okay.
Before?
But we didn't know that, so why is that? So, why did you know that, but not full council know that?
I think because you don't talk to anybody, you know, if you talk to people in the council, if you find that out.
I don't talk to them. They don't come to me. I know and ask questions about what's going on in meetings that I want to know.
Right, okay.
But that's not a very, and, and it's not a good answer and I understand that. And I think what might happen better would be to, for the person who attends those meetings that are committees to send those draft minutes to the city and have the city send the draft minutes out. They won't be final until they're approved at the next meeting, but at least you'd have the minutes.
Uh, and another thing would help too, before the personnel meetings used to be the Monday before the meeting, so we had a whole week to get that out to the council. Now you have them on Monday morning and then the council is Monday night. And that's not very good either. I think we should change that to have the personnel committee meeting at least the week before.
We can certainly look into that.
Absolutely.
I mean, that's the way it was. I don't know who changed it.
Well, I think we just collectively decided we'll just do it the same way.
Yeah, but see collectively between you and Greg?
Well, it was approved at the council meeting on, in January and I don't think you were here that night, I think you were safe. It was collectively approved there at the council meeting. But yeah.
So, but then, that's what you should, that's what you should do because you can't expect people to go through all this and all that. After this other stuff, I'd like to go to other communities and check and see. Because I enjoy doing that and I go through a lot of communities every meeting and I don't hesitate to stop. But when I get it on Friday, they're closed. And I go Saturday, so.
And I think the reason we didn't get a conflict on the first Monday committee.
Oh, it's hard for me on the first Monday. I could do it the different day of the week. But the first Monday for me is I have a ton of reports that I need to find full-time for. I own my real job, it's just a real job.
Well, it'll be good. Nice to, what can be done?
Yes.
See what works. Move a little bit up on this on the personnel committee. Just for people to all look at and see what we do. Are we ready to move on to public works now? Good. Council Street Seal Coating.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. It is twenty-seven, twenty-eight, your packet. It is the proposed, uh, next phase for seal coating of the city streets. Uh, the two thousand fifteen, uh, phase is going to consist of the entire subdivision of Pheasant Hills, the industrial park, and Rock Brook. Uh, we did get two bids as required by, one from Pearson Brothers in Hanover and the other one from, uh, the Callable Asphalt Company in Haywood, Minnesota. Uh, as it states on page twenty-seven of your packet, um, Pearson Brothers is the lowest bid that came in at fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars. And we are recommending that, uh, council approve, um, Pearson Brothers to do this phase of the seal coating project in two thousand fifteen.
Motion?
Twenty-two thousand. Have we, uh, one, one question. Have we had these people do seal coating before?
Absolutely.
Okay.
They are by, they are by far the busiest seal coders in Wreck County and metro area.
I can imagine if they're coming down.
And they're currently scheduled to do waiver lead right around the fourth of July, so they're trying to coordinate it with us to do that at the same time, if it was approved.
I'll make a motion to approve the court for Pearson Brothers.
I'll second that. Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Motion carries five aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Parks and Rec Minutes.
Park and Rec Commission met on, uh, Tuesday, May fifth and continued doing the, um, Parks and Trails Master Plan. The volleyball, the park that we were going to do on June, on June thirteenth, which is a Saturday. Flyers have been created, but we are holding off putting them up because we've had no response from anybody on, um, at the city level or on nextdoor.com, is what it's called. Um, so we haven't really had any responses, so we've been kind of holding off on putting those up to see if, Jesse Lesnell that's on the commission was going to see if he could get any responses from people on that nextdoor.com before we go ahead and put them up. The other thing was, the Minnesota Explorer was talked about at the April meeting and again in our strategic planning. And I have looked into getting in the Minnesota Explorer a couple different times, um, in the past and again, a couple, well, now it's been almost a month ago. And still have not gotten any response from them, so we're looking into it some way. See why they don't get back to me. Um, I actually have, Nicole had some free time, so she's kind of researching and seeing why they won't get back to us on it, how we can get into the Explorer. That was pretty much it.
We approve.
Yeah.
Chief Tripoli.
First is a relief.
Relief. Oh, the relief, alright, that's good. Alright.
Good evening, everybody. First of all is the, uh, two thousand fourteen audit for the Montreal Fire and Relief Association, which is in your packet. Um, I believe the first couple pages you got is from the auditor, um, uh, certificate findings of anyone as well. They made some money last year, which is a good thing. So, I need that approval. And then I got a couple things after that.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the, um, audit for the Fire and Relief Association?
I'll make a motion to approve the audit.
I'll second that. I vote aye. Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Motion carries five aye, accept the audit for the Fire and Relief Association.
The next one is on, uh, page thirty-two, you have a two thousand fifteen maximum benefit worksheet that we have to fill out under this. And if you look kind of in the middle there where it says twenty-three ten, that's kind of saying with the funds we got, that's our minimum we could pay our retirees, our firefighters and retirees. And the next number down is forty-two hundred, which would be the maximum we could pay them. So, it's just something for you to look at. If we come back, our audit says this, that's waiver root reference, so that's just information. And then further down in your, on page thirty-three or thirty-four, I believe. Um, on page thirty-three on that page, it says we have a surplus of seventy thousand, four hundred and thirty-one, so we're not in the black. And we're not in the red, excuse me. Which the state actually wants us more towards that ninety percent grant, so that we keep getting our state aid so they don't take it away. So, that's something else we need to look at probably later this year. And the next thing would be is we're gonna look into, because our audit is getting so expensive, doesn't matter now what they do, it has to be seventy-seven or sixty-seven that's coming up. It's gonna cost us some more money. We're looking at going in the state board of investments, which is paired with our firefighters. But we need the mayor to sign the paper for requests for proposals. I'd like to get that out of the way now so that when we get that part in the next month or two, hopefully, we can submit that proposal to the state to see if they come back. I don't want to cost us any more. Okay, ladies, our retirement due, we'll, we'll stay paired up on it to see what it's all about. We have to do that first.
We need a motion on that one. There.
Yeah.
A motion to, uh, I'll make the motion, go ahead and, uh, authorize seeking bids and solicitations for.
Well, it's a, it's a proposal, a request for proposal for state roll.
Uh, for the Fire and Relief Association. Second?
I'll second that.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries five aye.
Thank you, because it was important to have the audit. I can maybe explain it to them, but I can't figure all these numbers out here. I just looked at the law and I said, "The motion's important." Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Chief Tripoli now.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, first in your packet is the April activity report. Um, I'd just like to make a quick special mention, um, the significant number of actual fire calls we've had over the past month. Since I've been on, this is the only time that I can think of where we've actually had more fire-related calls than medical-related calls. We've been really busy throughout the month of April here. Generally, our medical calls are where fire and wrestling type calls, so, um, all of our guys have been working their butts off through April and stuff, so we're happy for some rain here, so. Um, the next thing that I have is just a reminder of the Call Before You Dig program, um, eight-one-one. There's a link on the website, um, at the bottom of the utilities page for citizens to go and click on a flyer that will remind you, call eight-one-one before you dig with it being, um, nice weather coming out. They're trying to promote that through the State Fire Marshal's Office of Pipeline Safety. Uh, next item for any permits, uh, burning permits are available through our fire warden, which are available at Mark's Body Shop during regular business hours. Um, information can be looked up on the Minnesota DNR website and I'm also gonna provide a link to our website, um, to the DNR over the next couple of days here. And then the next thing is I need some council direction on what to do with our old engine. And then the next thing is I need some council direction on what to do with our old engine twelve that is now sitting out at the sewer ponds. Um, we did seek sealed bids with an ending date of May seventh, and no sealed bids were received.
Any interest in that whatsoever?
I have one person questioned something about it, and no further contact or anything was made with that person at all. Um, I did have somebody just out of the blue, um, guy named Colin Bauer, he's through government deals, saying that because we are a member of the National Joint Powers Alliance, it's a thing that I signed up for through the Chiefs Association Free of Charge for the department, we can actually put it on their website for free. Um, the buyer actually pays all of the selling fees or whatever, probably they pay everybody. So that would be one option to us, and he actually found it by looking at the lead Minnesota City website and said, "Hey, and I don't look at that time, hey, I have posted for sealed bids, you have to wait until that's done," so...
Okay.
I don't know if council would like me to move forward with him and try and get the process moving with that, or...
Any objections to moving forward with the posting of the deal prep?
Okay. And unless there's any questions or anything else, that's all I can do.
Thank you. Next issue is the new vision, mission, and purpose statements that we reviewed at our, um, planning meeting. That has been finalized, you have it in the packets. I'd like to adopt that this evening.
The updated one is the one that I handed out, it was like a computer.
And the updated one changes to our actual logo phrase on the website with the mission statement, that's the biggest change. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the mission.
Second?
I'll second.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye, Lloyd?
Aye.
Motion carries five o to mission, uh, vision, mission, purpose statements. Did they get the objectives in there as well, Wendy, on this packet? I don't believe so.
No, we're going to lock in that for the workshop.
Okay. Um, what I will do is I will send out to you, um, I took the objectives that we identified in the workshop and put those two, um, key goals and key projects, and I'll shoot that out to you guys and send them in, that you can send out to you all by email, that you can review that and be prepared to discuss at the next workshop. Now, that will allow us then to have those key projects, and what I'd like to do is look at waiting those key projects so that our staff knows what takes priority as far as what needs to be done first. Okay, new business resolution twenty, uh, fifteen, page twelve.
This resolution is just, it's housekeeping. We've had a city agent, our insurance agent, for years. I don't know of any cities that don't have, Lloyd said something about it. I don't know of any cities that don't have an agent. We've always used Wells Fargo. Um, they get the same as everybody else gets, any agents get all the same, it's a ten percent fee that they receive. From the league, um, because our league and our insurance is to league Minnesota Cities. They help us with all of the information that the league requires. They actually, uh, the league actually submits it to the agent, the agent sends it to us to do the, any numbers we need to give, and then the agent actually goes back and does it all with the league of Minnesota Cities. And this is just the resolution that we do annually to appoint that agent.
And a motion to approve, resolution twenty fifteen twelve?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution twenty fifteen twelve.
Okay. Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye, Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Motion carries five o. Additionally, with that, Wendy, liability waiver form?
Um, this is also, um, housekeeping. The city in the past has always objected not to waive. It says on the bottom, remember, does not waive monetary limits on municipal tort liability. So if you, if you want to pick the one that says we want to waive it, that means, um, well, to not waive it, I mean, to... If you do not waive the monetary limits, that means if the city is sued for some reason, their limit is five hundred thousand dollars. If you chose to waive it, they could sue you up to two million, about, two million dollars, and you have to, you would be advised by the league Minnesota Cities to carry an additional policy to cover that. So it ended up costing you more money.
The recommendation is, does not waive.
Correct. Correct.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to, um, not waive the stretch for our liability coverage.
Second?
I'll second.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye, Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Motion carries five o. Do not waive the monetary limits in our liability coverage. Okay, the last one in your package actually is the final document for the, um, planning section that we went through. There was a change on that document. Um, it had listed as downtown area, and it should have listed Highway twelve.
It actually was removed completely.
Corridor, so it was moved completely.
It did, we're dropping that.
It was under, on the far right hand side, it inserted page...
Page eight.
Yeah, page, um, eight.
His page eight.
Mike, his page eight.
Sorry.
Where it had a unified team approach to city's business, I believe that was. And it should say, uh, Highway twelve corridor.
Actually, actually, Grace, you took that out completely.
Yeah.
So you took out, so it just starts with, we leave parking, can't stamp that stuff, handout that I put out there.
Yeah, the part of what we established was the goal was the Highway twelve corridor curfew. That's what we addressed it as in that. Okay. That moves us to finding a workshop.
I, I think, um, Richard wanted the council to either, I mean, to decide if they want to accept this, if you want to do a motion to accept the plan. Because he asked me to present it to the council for acceptance, so...
Is there a motion to accept the timing workshop, timing document?
I'll make a motion to accept the timing workshop now, I'm ready.
Second?
I'll second.
I vote aye, Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Motion carries five o. Workshop. We had the twenty-second and the first available, am I correct on that?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
On the first of June.
On the first of June.
So next, how many are two weeks from today, right? Three, three weeks from today.
Yes, it's two weeks.
Yeah, two weeks, more or less.
And not that this makes a difference, but, um, the first week you have a BNI, we'll be having a conference call with the state, two planner ceremony, um...
What time is that, seven?
It's at seven. About eighteen, about that?
Does the eighteenth work for everyone else?
Sure. So, what time now?
Can we start earlier?
Uh, do we need to start earlier on that? Can we start earlier? So that's going to be a longer workshop? Six work for everybody? Six o'clock, we'll start with that. And we may need to have a closed session on that. Can we do five? Anybody can do five?
Five can do five.
No?
Six.
Six, a question, so six o'clock?
Six.
Six.
Where are we doing that?
And this will be at the city hall, uh, conference room, because the community center is tied up. Okay, anything else for the city? Acknowledgements. I'd like to acknowledge the Boy Scouts for the donation to a site you've Boy Scout up. We made a one thousand dollar donation.
Aye.
No. And I could recognize Anna Carlson, who has the Happenings page up and running on our website now. Which is a go-to site for issues that are happening in Montrose, where anyone in Montrose would go to that site. It's a Google Calendar site, and they are linked to events and to our nonprofits and churches and activities so that they go to that site, find out what's happening in Montrose. Nice work.
Thank you, man.
Not bad.
Okay. Um, I wanted to thank the BNI Urban Committee and all of the runners, and even just the community team also to support us. We ended up with a hundred and thirty-six runners that night and made two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. Good job.
Nice job.
And we plan to meet again next year, April twenty-third.
Any other acknowledgements?
Good, good to see Pat back, uh, job. Doing a good job.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make that motion. Do we have to go to a closed session? Don't we still have to do that?
No, it's a, it's a record of findings. We're on our, yeah. Yeah, so that's the closed. That's right, okay, yes, that's the walk room. All right, Michelle?
Michelle, go to adjourn.
And Melissa made a second. Roy, I see, uh, Lloyd, yeah. Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye, standing there.